I'd like to call this meeting of the Northwest Local School District Board of Education to order. Chris, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Unger.
Here.
Mr. Harlow.
Here.
Mr. Heether.
Here.
Mrs. Detschel.
Here.
And I'd like to ask Samuel Moore, who's a Boy Scout in the audience, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is approval of minutes. Mr. Bowling?
Yes, approval of minutes for the regular meeting, August 24, 2015. The Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is approval of September 2nd minutes.
Yes, we had another special meeting, September 2nd. The Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, please call a vote. September 2nd minutes are approved, five to nothing. Legislative update. Mr. Harlow?
Yes, I have two things. First of all, the legislature will be back in session soon, and one of the things that they'll be taking up is charter school reform, which will hopefully provide a better level of accountability for charter schools. And the second thing is the State Board of Education, I believe it's for the first time in that body's history, took a side on a statewide ballot issue, statewide ballot issue, State Issue 3. That's the amendment that would set up the legalization of marijuana, the Board of Education. The state actually voted against that. They're encouraging a no vote on State Issue 3. Definitely some concern of what's happened in some other states that have legalized marijuana, some of the impact it's had on education, just in terms of student disciplinary issues and things of that nature. So, that's the update from Columbus.
Thank you, Michael. Our next item is Student Achievement Liaison Report. Pam?
I'm very excited to introduce, I believe, Mr. Mark Hensler from Pleasant Run Middle School to talk about a program that's been going on for a while, the National Anthem Project.
Good evening.
There you go.
All right, come on. President Unger, Superintendent Bowling, distinguished guests, and the school board, thank you very much for this opportunity to come speak to you about a very special project we've had going at Pleasant Run Middle School now for 11 years. As a state officer in the Ohio Music Education Association back in 2005, I was lucky enough to participate in the kickoff of a national campaign to help students learn the words to the Star Spangled Banner. A Harris poll showed that two out of three Americans did not know the words to the Star Spangled Banner. And a lot of this was due to the fact that there'd been many cuts in school music programs during that time period especially, and it's not likely a song students are going to learn at home, like they might learn Happy Birthday, or Rock-a-Bye Baby, or little, you know, kid songs. So, really felt that this was a strong need. And for three years, across the United States, schools came together on September 14th at 9:00 a.m. September 14th is the anniversary of the writing of the National Anthem by Francis Scott Key. And we came together nationally several times to do this. At the end of the three-year project, with Mr. Maine's support, we continued. So, there might be a few other schools in the nation that have continued the project, but Pleasant Run certainly has been very strong there. The project involves all of our students and staff coming out in front of the school and singing together. We spend a couple of weeks at the beginning of the school year learning the words and focusing on the history of the National Anthem. I just have one of the resources here that the teachers use that I put together. This is a little video from, I believe this was the 2008 National Anthem Day. That's on YouTube if you're interested in seeing that. We had it out in front of the school. And if you wouldn't mind clicking on some of the other links just there real quickly. Teachers have access to information about the Star Spangled Banner itself, the history of the song, defense of Fort McHenry, Francis Scott Key's biography, the Battle of Baltimore, which was the inspiration for the poem. There's a variety of worksheets where the students can practice the words and find out a little bit more. I should've thought about doing a pre-test tonight. I should've had that prepared. Just came to me when I was sitting over there. Dang it, I missed my opportunity there. And also Smithsonian as well. That may require another link. But, we talk in class, and I know a lot of the teachers do in social studies and others, about the actual flag and how they're restoring the flag. This actually is a photo from last year for the 10th anniversary. We kind of pulled out all the stops, and we had Team Fast Tracks, some of you may be familiar with, up in Middletown. They came in and delivered the flag last year. Mr. Maine was supposed to do that this year, but that didn't work out, so we couldn't get them back. That was a pretty high-profile event for us last year. But nonetheless, we still move forward with a great event. This is Ms. Chelsea Hillard. She is our chorus teacher at Pleasant Run Middle School, and she teaches the students in the chorus sign language to the Star Spangled Banner. That's something we started five or six years or so ago in the chorus program, and she's continued that. So, the kids, we try to get them towards the front of the lineup. They do the sign language while we sing. We have community members, Corrine Township Police Fire Department. We've had the sheriff's helicopter come out and be part of the event. We've had a bagpiper who was the grandfather of one of our students came and played a medley of several of the different Armed Forces tunes. We've also had, let's see, we already talked about the parachutist. We all gather in the red, white, and blue. And I think it's been a fun event for the kids, and it's really a unifying event for our school at the beginning of the year to just kind of pull us all together towards a quick project with kind of a performance piece, I guess you would say, at the end. And I have a couple of students here that are eighth graders at Pleasant Run Middle School that have been involved in it, and I thought it'd be nice to just kind of hear a student's perspective for a moment. I'm Carly. This is Carly Boyd. And Carly's been involved with this now three years. Can you maybe tell them a little bit about the project from your perspective, Carly?
So, in sixth grade, I was new to it, and I didn't know a lot about it. So, we started rehearsing in the mornings and singing the song. And when we got to do the project in the front of the building is when we started doing it. We all gathered up, and we wore blue, white, and red, and all the different grade colors, or grade levels were different colors. And when we gathered, we sang, and it was cool because there were like bagpipers and stuff like that. And it was really fun and united us more. Because I didn't, I started like learning the sign language to it, things like that. It was really fun. It was really cool and fun.
Great, thank you. And this is Deja Brown. Deja also happens to be a music student as well, but that's okay, we'll accept that. She's in the band, so. You didn't bring your trumpet to play it, did you?
No.
Okay, all right. But she learned the lyrics as well. Will you tell them a little bit about what you think of the National Anthem Project?
Well, when I first started in sixth grade, I didn't know a lot about what the National Anthem was or what it was about, but I'm in eighth grade now. I can say I learned a lot about it from singing it in front of the school for three years now. And it's really cool to see all the school come together and the community come together to see us sing the National Anthem and just be a community.
Since you've been in sixth grade, do you think it's something that students look forward to as they come back each fall now, kind of expect it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we just have a lot of coverage here through the past. We've been very, very lucky to have Channel 5, 9/12/19 come out. We were even School of the Week one year for Fox 19. We've had, of course, the Waycross Media and our Northwest Press, Cincinnati Enquirer. This is a little bulletin board outside my room with some of the clippings and different things to kind of let the students know the history of the event. And this year also, Mr. Maine was able to secure our flag shirts for our eighth grade, and I believe our students have a little gift here for the board members if you want to go ahead and do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You see Color Guard, Northwest Color Guard has participated as well in the past. And it really has been a fun event just to teach the kids the proper etiquette when you're singing the National Anthem. And sing it the best to their ability. It's not easy to sing, as we know. We've seen a lot of people mess it up over the years, so it's not easy to sing. But we thought we would close things out tonight if it's okay with you to join in the National Anthem and then sing along with our video. We have a little video from our gathering on last Friday. I believe it's about queued up here with the Color Guard, and if we'd like to sing along. And I know Chelsea's going to sign. We have the living flag. I'd like to see students in red, white, and blue. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. We have the living flag. You see, person right will color guard. Thank you very much. It's an opportunity to tell you a little bit about our program, and maybe we'll be back on the 20th anniversary until you know.
Thank you very much. That was great. I love the sign language addition to that. Awesome.
And thank you for making sure the shirts were extra large. And your program pretty much speaks for itself. What a great thing to make sure that we pass along to every next generation.
There's a lot of adults that don't know the words.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to our next item, which is Butler Tech update. Jim?
Yeah, Dan, just two things. We hired a new treasurer, a gentleman named Paul Carpenter, last week. He will be starting here in about a month. And then a reminder for the all-boards meeting, October 13th. Todd, I think, didn't you send an email out to contact Donna?
All registered.
Okay. And other than that, school's off to a good start. And with the new bioscience building, everything's going good.
Great.
I just want to interject. I was at the, was able to make the grand opening there Thursday night, and it was really outstanding. I didn't get to see the, I didn't get to see Bill Miller there, but I got a tour actually from his predecessor, Bob Summers, actually.
Okay.
Who was, of course, the superintendent when we were, when we joined Butler Tech, and somebody I've crossed paths with over the years. It's a beautiful facility, it really is. It's just amazing what's been done in that space and the up-to-date learning labs and the live, I don't want to use the word dummy, but the student, the medical practice, it's a, I don't even know the term, but it's computerized.
Manic.
Manic, yes. And it's, they can program it to simulate all different kinds of medical conditions for the students to practice on. It's amazing.
That's a lot of wonderful opportunities for our students.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, Jim.
Okay, Dan.
Our next item is report from employee organizations. If there's someone here from a certificated licensed employee group, please approach the microphone.
Good evening. And for those who don't know me, I'm Kevin Kane. I'm the president of our teachers' association. And if I knew I was going to have to sink tonight, I would've warmed up a little bit in the car. Didn't do very well in the high note. But I just wanted to come by tonight. I was able to make the meeting in August to say hello, and I just wanted to say welcome to a new school year. As I came into the driveway here, the sign said, "We're off to a great start." And I truly believe that we are off to a great start. I just can't believe it's the fifth week already, and we're starting to put grades in for our progress reports. But first, I do want to welcome 80 new teachers. This is probably the largest group of new teachers we've had in probably a decade. And so, I do hope that our new teachers are being made to feel welcomed and encouraged and supported by our veteran staff here in the school district. I know our teachers started very early in August to get ready. I saw them in the buildings, the couple buildings I was in, the very first week of August, getting their rooms ready and their lessons prepared. And so, I know that they have a renewed goal to improve our student achievement this year, and they're working hard each day to provide a high-quality education. Every year, there's change, and we always say change is inevitable. Some change is good, and some change isn't so good. The last couple of years with the state of Ohio and the laws that they created, I can't say that all change has been good. And it's been a lot of work for our administration as well as our teachers to keep up with all the changes. But I have to say that this year, it's been different. This year, the change has been positive. I get a real sense that things are lighter and, you know, not as heavy on us this year. And so, I just wanted to make some comments, because I do appreciate Todd's opening day in-service talk and encouragement, and I thought that went a long way to help our teachers get off to a good start. We embrace your vision for this district, and we'll support that vision throughout the entire school year. I appreciate the state legislator's realization that excessive standardized testing is not a good educational practice. And so, by eliminating department testing, we can provide more instruction for our students instead of taking so much time to take tests that, well, I'm not sure that this last year will mean a whole lot since we're really not using the data, well, we haven't seen the data yet, so it's hard to use something you haven't seen yet. So, the state of Ohio, I'm glad that they did that. And then, I appreciate the administration's, I look at Jenny because we've had conversations, their willingness to listen to the concerns over the last couple of years that we have had. I had noticed that the SLO process has been mainstreamed, and it doesn't seem to be as much of a burden. We've reduced the number of tests that our students have to take with the SLO process. I've noticed that the TBT process has been mainstreamed, and it seems like our teachers will really be able to use that data to help improve instruction. So, I appreciate that. But again, the administration and the teachers have been talking and have been working collaboratively to create positive change, and I think this year really reflects in how the beginning of the school year has started. And so, I appreciate the work the administration has done, as well as our teachers that have worked closely with you. And finally, I do want to say that we, the association is in full support of the levy again. This time, we're going to, it's going to pass. We know that the new buildings and the renovations will help our teachers provide a high-quality education for all of our students, but not just for the teachers and not just for the students. So, we know that this is important for this community, and this community needs new buildings. It needs to see that the community is growing and improving as a whole. And so, I hope and I encourage the community to look at the facility plan, the master facility plan, learn about what this levy is all about. And I know that we will be encouraging our teachers to get involved, to get out there, to talk to the parents, to talk to the community, to tell our story about why we believe that this is important for our community. And so, the association will work closely with the levy committee to make sure that that happens. So, welcome back to a new school year, and I'm glad I got a chance to say hello and to address you tonight.
Thank you, Kevin. Our next item is report from classified employee organization. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? I'm seeing none. Report from school-related organizations. Is there anyone here from a school-related organization that would like to speak? I'm seeing none. Community comments. Did we get any filled-out yellow cards? You had indicated you wanted to speak when you came in.
Yes, sir.
Typically.
I did not hear the yellow card. I didn't know about the yellow card.
Okay. Ask the board for the favor of letting this man speak.
Sure.
Okay. Jim Acton.
Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. To begin with, I'd like to thank the school board and particularly Paulette for assisting me with the memorial ceremonies out at Corrine and Springdale Road. The township seemed to not want to help us this year, so it was an all-volunteer organization. So, Paulette, thank you for having a choir there. Sorry it rained harder than you know what that morning, but we did have a good turnout there. Roughly about 350 people showed up. We're glad to see that. The gentleman was just here. He was speaking about the community as a whole. And I got these numbers from Dusty Rhodes' office, and I guess in 2015, he'll come out with a new rating of how many students and, excuse me, how many people are in Corrine Township and what the categories are from age one all the way up to 75. And from what I can see, in 2013, there was roughly 46,000, 47, or excuse me, '09, there was 46,000, 047 residents. Today, as of 2013, there's 3,000, or 37,034. From all indications that I've seen and from speaking to different representatives of the township, we've lost about 20 percent, and it continues on that downward trend. I hope with the school board and all the activities that are going on in the schools and all, we can turn this here downward slide away. People my age, that's where the biggest drop is. Whether we're dying off or what we're doing, we're going into rest homes or where we're going, I don't know. These numbers don't indicate this. But just to bring you up, and there's some of the numbers that are available out there. And this will be a big political issue, particularly in the trustee meetings this year. There are four candidates this year, one incumbent and three new people. So, I know one of them will be pressing this issue with the older people getting out the votes. Seems to be his scenario. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the stadiums. Northwest, particularly in Corrine High School Stadium, neither meets ADA qualifications at this point. I've met with both athletic directors there and have asked them what we can do. He said the best thing to do, and Dan, I want to thank you for getting me in touch with Corrine High School. But if somebody in my condition or with wheelchair, whatever other affliction, whether it might be a young kid or not, there's basically no way to get in the football stadiums to watch football games. I've been told that Corrine and also at Northwest, you sit at field level to watch the games. I'm sure there's nobody in here would like to sit at field level and watch Cinex play Corrine or Northwest play Mount Health. You can't see anything. So, what I suggest to both of them, and I hope the board here will do something about it, and this is also for the gymnasiums inside, is to put handrails up so we can pull ourselves One rail up the middle or off either side so we can pull up. Corrine High School, I'm talking to the athletic director there, I don't know if he's brought it up to anybody, but behind the selected seating to the west of the scoreboard, or west of the broadcast booth, there is probably about a 20-foot area that there could be a platform built there. If you come in that entrance, go along the driveway and sit there. I attend my grandsons, two of them, one's in Lebanon, one's here at Corrine Township. We go to different football stadiums. I know we're kind of antiquated here per se. Stadiums have been here a lot longer than some of these newer ones. But everybody out there that I've been to, they've had ramps that you could get up to the first level, and most of them were just high. Nope, sorry about that. About as high as this here so that you can look out in the field, over the players, over the cheerleaders and all that, and see the ballgame. We don't have that in Corrine Township. How many older people, we come to these games, I have no idea. I know I'd be one of them. I haven't been to Corrine Stadium to watch a senior high school game probably in seven years since my granddaughter stopped playing soccer. I did go to watch my grandson, who goes to Corrine Elementary, and I was told by one of your supporters to help build the stadium and put some money into it. Go up, go by the press box, go down the steps. Guess what? I got down okay. Took my two daughters to get me out of that place. That's not fair to us. We're the ones that started the school system. We're the ones that vote on it all the time. I say I voted on every levy that's ever hit. I know you're probably going to put another levy on soon. My suggestion is get out there with word that there's not going to be a tax increase per se, maybe a half percent. But, I don't know exactly how to say it. It's not going to cost you anything to educate our kids in the future that are coming up. So, that's all I got to say. I hope you've taken some consideration. Some of us older people that are out there would like to attend the games. Even the military people, I understand when you have their function at Corrine and Northwest, they have to sit at ground metal. Most of the guys say, you know, "Why go? We're not watching the ballgame. You know, it's a nice affair and all." But get us up where we can see something. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Dan had actually forwarded some correspondence to the rest of us about it, and I think it's something that, you know, we should probably look into.
Do you guys mind if I make a comment?
Sure, sure.
We have the master facility plan, Mr. Acton, and I was pulling it up as you were speaking. We have set aside money if the levy passes, anywhere from $50,000 to $600,000 at each building to do handicap accessibility. My hope is and pray is that it does pass, but even if it doesn't, we will do our best to make sure you have access to those two stadiums. But it is perfectly lined up with our new plan if we get our levy November 3rd to pass. So, we'll do our best, even if it doesn't, to get you what you need.
Let me fly back to you. I noticed that Corrine Stadium, broadcast booth there, there is 18 sponsors. Give you the money. All 18 of them, I know, have money in their pocket. When I had, I had a corner built up at Corrine and Springdale, I approached Walmart. When I had, I had a corner built up at Corrine and Springdale, I approached Walmart, Kroger, Trump, and so on and so on, just a few of them. Dealing with Kroger for over 30 years, they came back to me and said, "We only have the money." And I said, "BS, take $10,000 out of your advertising budget, which runs you over $1 million a week. You got it." When I give $10,000, so, there's a question you gotta ask and approach the community. I'm not allowed to talk to the community about raising any more funds, I've been told that by the trustee, so...
And we have great relationships with our community members. They're partners in education for our schools, some of the places that you did mention, so we will, we will continue to go out and pursue that.
One of them might know, he said he's $5,000 already.
You and I will talk afterwards.
Thank you, thank you for coming, Mr. Acton, and not with no-
Thank you.
-with no other yellow cards, and he did, typically, we do have our people that want to speak fill out a yellow card. But, but just for, they're usually out on the table, but just for the, for the minutes, it's, is it A-C-T-O-N?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jim? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Our next item is a superintendent item, certificated licensed personnel.
Yes, 11.1 certified licensed personnel retirements and resignations. You will find one acceptance-
One acceptance of certified resignation, several procedural resignations of assorted tutors, three extra-duty resignations, two fall banned assistant resignations, and multiple procedural event workers' resignations. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Chris, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item, Mr. Bowling.
Classified resignations and retirements. We have nine classified resignations, five seed assistant procedural resignations, 15 classified sub-procedural resignations. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Chris, please call a vote.
I'll take this moment to add, as I do at every meeting, that our agendas are posted usually on the Friday before the Monday meetings, so these are available to the public and it's available to the board members, no matter where we're at, that we can get into the agenda and read through all the different attachments, which, which I always do, and normally, I like to mention that once a meeting, so did you get in there, Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries five to zero. Our next item, Mr. Bowling, is a fiscal item.
Yes, the next item is approval of new funds for the Butler Tech grant and high schools that work. The treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the new funds as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Chris, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is another fiscal item, Mr. Bowling.
Yes, this is accept and appropriate federal and state grants. We have preschool $260,000, St. Joe's $78,000-plus, La Salle $553,000. So, there are assorted auxiliary grants and Title II, Title I grants. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve to accept an appropriate federal and state grants as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is this just, so this is pretty much a bookkeeping item where it's just creating more, an easier way to follow the dollars that are just passing through to some of the non-public schools that Northwest administers auxiliary programs for?
Correct. We need to set up a fund for each of the grants, and the board has to accept the grant so that we can spend, so, accept the grant and then appropriate it so that we can pay the bills.
So, this is passed through state and federal dollars?
Not all the federal is passed through, so that's for our district.
Okay, but the money that's going into there is coming from state and federal?
Correct.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Chris, please call a vote. Motion is approved, five to zero. Our next item, Mr. Bowling.
Next is our vendor contracts and compliance with ORC. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education authorize their vendor contracts as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Chris, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a general business item, Mr. Bowling.
Yes, this is RFQ for construction manager at-risk services in lieu of our bond issue on the November 3rd ballot, issue 16. So, we would like to get approval to put this out. We need to have it posted for 30 days. Our goal is to have this, the construction manager at-risk named by somewhere near the election, so this is the perfect time to get it out. So, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the RFQ for construction manager at-risk CMR services as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Chris, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. A certificated licensed personnel item, Mr. Bowling. We on 13?
13, 5?
Okay, yes.
Yes. Yes, this is certificated licensed personnel items. You will find one initial appointment, two changes in status, 18 salary schedule placements, multiple approval of tutors for auxiliary, ESL intervention, title and home instructors, multiple extra-duty contracts, and approval of athletic event workers, and a resolution to hire non-licensed coaches. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Chris, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a classified personnel item, Mr. Bowling.
Yes, for our classified personnel items, we have 22 classified initial appointments, five approvals of seed extended-day assistance, seven approval of classified substitutes, five approval of classified subs at various rates, one approval of leave of absence, six classified approvals of change in status. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Chris, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Student services item.
Yes, this is an overnight and extended field trip request. The Northwest High School cross-country coaches are requesting permission to take 14 students to Canton, Ohio to the Malone Invitational. Purpose of this event is to prepare students for competition at a high level and exposure to college coaches. Departure for this trip is scheduled for Friday, September 25th, and students are scheduled to return on Sunday, September 27th. One half-day of school will be missed by attending this camp on Friday. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve this overnight and extended field trip as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say I'm real glad to see that they're doing this. Lots of times, we take for granted, but sometimes these kids, this is the only time they really even, or maybe their first time they even get exposure to being on a college campus. So, I, again, I think I've mentioned in the past, when, when a teacher, staff member, coach, you know, steps up and takes that responsibility to take these kids out of, out of town and overnight, it's a big responsibility, but it, it certainly can make a world of difference for the kids. So, I want to thank them ahead of time, wish them a safe trip, and hope the kids, I know they'll get a really good experience out of it.
Thank you. Pam, is there any other discussion?
I just, I just hope that the Northwest Knights succeed on, on the course and have a, have a safe and enjoyable trip while they're there, and as Mrs. Detschel said, get to experience college campus possibly for the first time, or, you know, possibly again, or possibly it's different to see Malone, which is a smaller school compared to, you know, say, the University of Cincinnati, or something students might be familiar with.
You know, and they have a, their cross-country coach, Jeppe Malone, he was an assistant on the Olympic team back in 2012. Jack Hazen is his name. So, they got a guy up there that they can-
Got a great program.
-learn a lot from.
Oh, absolutely.
Jim, is Northwest's cross-country on par with their short-distance runners? If they are, it's gotta be a powerful team.
You know, I haven't, I haven't seen them in, at any of the meets that we're at at Corrine so far, so I don't know. We'll see them at the district for sure, but I don't, I don't know what their schedule, the rest of their schedule is.
I have nothing to say, so I guess we'll go on and ask Chris to call for a vote. Field trip is approved, five to zero. Our next item is a certificated licensed personnel item.
Yes, this is revised board policy GCN-2 for teacher evaluation. It is for information only. It is evaluation of the professional staff policy. The next couple of policies that you see for information are because we just need to get our policies updated that we currently have. So, the revised board policy will be considered for approval at the next board meeting.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and just ask if there's discussion, or we'll move on to the next policy. We'll move on to the next policy. Mr. Bowling?
The next one is revised board policy GCNA. It's standards-based teacher evaluation. It's, again, just making sure our teacher evaluation system is in line with state requirements. This, the revised board policy will be considered for approval at the next board meeting, and we give it to you in advance, so you can look it over and see if you have any questions for the next one.
And our next, another revised board policy?
Yes, this next one is a requirement for remedial instruction. We already have this board policy in place through our policy books, but it needs to be updated. So, again, this is just an update of what we currently have. The revised board policy will be considered for approval at the next board meeting.
Any reading skills assessments intervention policy?
Yes, we are required to do reading skill assessments and provide intervention when needed. This is updating our policy and getting it up to date with the latest information and all that is out there. So, this is also a good way for us to update our policies that are on the NWLSD website, so this will get us up to date for those also. So, this is for information only.
Okay. And a career advising policy?
Yes, this is a new policy for career advising with the changes in what it takes for graduation requirements. Career advising becomes a big part of that and a pathway that they can get. This is associated with our Butler Tech programs. So, again, this is a revised policy that will look for approval at the next meeting.
I just want to add that Butler Tech received a state grant for a career counseling pilot project, and it's supposed to go towards all students, not just Butler Tech students, but all students within their service.
Okay. And our next policy is a promotion and retention of students policy.
Yes, we currently have the promotion and retention policy. This is just updating it, like the rest.
Okay. And graduation requirements?
Same thing, another update. The revised board policy will be considered for approval. As I said, the state has changed some graduation requirements. This lists them out, and it compares what we have and what we'll be required to have.
And visitors to the schools policy?
Yes, this is in with the safety that Ohio is, making sure that all schools encompass. It affects basically visitors to the school and what they must do in order to report to the office, what guidelines they must follow. So, it is, again, updating our board policy for there, and that should be the last one.
Okay, and is there any discussion on any of these? Anybody had any comments? I would just like to say, we've read these into the record, these policies are out there, and the board encourages you to go on our website and click on these and read them. So, at the next meeting, when we go to approve these, you're ready with any questions, and, you know, next week, the approvals will, will go through because we'll all have a chance to read these, and, and so please take the time to, to see what we're doing here with these policies, rather than find out a year and a half from now when one of them affects you, and that's why we read them into the public record. So, we'll move on to the next item, which is community communications. Is there someone in the audience that has a question or comment specific to something that we have discussed this evening? And seeing that no one has any comments or questions, we'll move on to the next item, which is other board items. Mr. Heather?
Well, first of all, I want to welcome our Eagle Scout-to-be, who is calling it awful close, Sam. I think the rules with Eagle Scouts, my nephew's one, and I know Dan's son is an Eagle Scout, you have to have everything completed by your 18th birthday, and you turn 18 on Sunday. So, nothing like calling a close.
It's Monday, Chris, he has six days.
Congratulations, it's a real accomplishment, as I told my nephew when he became an Eagle Scout. It has helped him in his job, getting jobs. It's such a thing to really stand out on a resume, so few people have it, so I congratulate you, Sam, and thanks for coming tonight.
Mr. Detschel?
Yeah, congratulations also, Sam. It's a big accomplishment. I know my cousin was at Eagle Scout, and he had, like you, about two weeks to go before he turned 18 and got it. And then, Mr. Acton, I want to appreciate you coming up, giving us that information on the stadiums, and hopefully, we can get this levy passed and it won't raise the taxes so, you know, we can get that taken care of, so you guys can come to the games, or, you know, any, anybody that's, you know, that needs some help, in a wheelchair, cane, or whatever. Thank you.
And Mr. Harlow?
I do not have any comments.
Thank you. Michael and Pam?
A couple different things. First of all, I want to let everyone know that we have a levy kickoff. It's this Thursday at Northgate Mall. I don't know if people realize how much, not only man-hours, but even finances it takes to put on a levy. We'll have yard signs available, so you can stop by the mall and pick those up. We'll have some performing groups at the mall, so you can stop by also and see, see our kids in action. We are selling raffle tickets. They're $10. We've had quite a few generous people that have donated items so that we can raffle them off. We use that money then to turn around, and it, it helps pay for the mailers and pay for the signs, and so on and so forth. So, if any of you in the audience haven't bought a raffle ticket and you'd like some, come see us up here, we have them. We'd also like to see you at the mall on Thursday. The drawing will be Thursday night at 7:30, but come before that so you can see our kids. But, is it 5:30?
5:30 to 7:30.
Yep, 5:30, and then we'll end with the drawing at 7:30 up at Northgate Mall. And Northgate has helped us quite a bit with providing this space year after year, so we appreciate their help as well. I did overhear you ask Dan a question, and I loved it. You said, "What, what can young people do? What is, what is something young people do to get involved?" And one of the things I would say, especially since you're turning 18 on Monday, register to vote. You kids need to register to vote, and you need to ask all your friends to register to vote. We have forums in all the offices. You can also go online, Hamilton County-
I don't know if they're out in the lobby or not.
-Board of Education and, or not Board of Educati, or-
Board of Elections.
Board of Elections. I just did it today in my mind, and you can print it off right there, mail it in, but you're our future, and we need you to take the time and get educated and vote on these things. So, to me, I couldn't wait till when I was 18 to be able to register to vote, so it's just very, very important. So, if you can pass that along to all your buddies, that, you would be surprised how much that will help.
Thank you, Pam. I'd like to congratulate the Detschels. I believe they've had a grandchild, and Pam's made it to the meeting without talking about that grandchild and how the schools-
I was gonna say-
-will be, help out your grandchild.
You know, I almost, when you were, when you were saying that-
I'm sorry, if anybody needs to get up and leave before this starts.
My cell phone died as we were pulling in, and I'm like, "How am I gonna show any pictures?" But when you were talking about we were declining, I wanted to say, "Oh, but we've got a little grandson that in five years will be attending Mofford Heights Elementary, so I'm sure, I'm hoping there'll be more to come, but thanks."
And Pam, you can go shop up at Northgate and start, you haven't bought anything for that child yet. Now, Jim, Jim wasn't sure if you bought anything yet, so-
And his phone's working, so if anybody wants to see pictures after the meeting, I made sure to-
Well, that's great, and in all seriousness, congratulations, that's a wonderful thing for your family. I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the meeting and wish you well in your future endeavors, Mr. Moore, and if you want to come up here afterwards, I'll, I'll look at your requirement and sign off on it. So, with no other business, our, our next meeting is, we have one next Monday night, so we'll move on to the next item, which is a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Chris, please call a vote. Motion to adjourn the meeting passes five to zero. Thank you for coming.